Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. All members are present and accounted for. Now we'll move to the invocation tonight. We're pleased to have Kennedy Goolsby. She's a rising 4th grade student at Armstrong School for the Arts.
Good evening. My name is Kennedy Goolsby. This year, I'll be in the 4th grade at Armstrong School for the Arts. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Now, I will read a poem entitled "Summer Vacation" by Christine L. Brown. It's summertime. School vacation has begun. Time for children to play and have fun in the sun. Now the children are out of school. There are trees to climb and swimming in the pool. Time to spend with special friends, seeing their honor go until the day's end. But when summer vacation is finally through, it's time to hit the books and return to school.
Thank you so much, Kennedy. Are there some special people here you'd like us to meet?
My mom, my sister, and my Nana, and the Armstrong School staff members.
Please stand and be recognized. And thank you so much, Ms. Rogers, you and your staff as well. Now Kennedy, what have you been doing all summer?
I went to Georgia for 4th of July, and I rode a jet ski.
Now, is there somebody special who lives in Georgia?
My Nana and my family.
Your Nana. And I just want to say that I understand from your Nana, Ms. Denard, correct, that she came all the way here from Georgia just to hear you give this invocation. In fact, she only arrived about an hour ago. So let's have a special round of applause for me. So what are some of your favorite subjects in school?
My favorite subject is math and art.
Well, you know what? You've done a very, very good job in terms of writing and reading. That poem was excellent. Are there any comments from any other members of the board? Yes, Ms. Henry?
I just want to remind Ms. Rogers that she can get a recording of this from Channel 46 to give to Nana.
We're always looking out for the Nanas, right. Anybody else? Well, thank you so much, and we hope you enjoy the rest of your summer. And we know you're going to have a great year come this academic year. Thanks again.
You're welcome.
Our next item for business is the adoption of the Agenda 1.03. Approval slash changes may be made at this time. Is there a motion for the adoption of the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve the adoption of the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item, which is actually 2.01, is a swearing-in of our student representative. Our student representative this year is Jeremy Taylor, who is a Hampton High School junior. Mr. Taylor, would you please meet me up on the front? Mr. Taylor is also active in his school at Hampton High. He's a member of the Key Club, the Decker Club, the Debate Society, and you spent the summer at the Governor's School, I understand. So we've got a wonderful student representative. Would you hold up your right hand and please repeat after me? Aye. Say your name.
Aye, Jeremy Taylor.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties incumbent upon me as the school board's student representative according to the best of my ability. Congratulations and welcome aboard. Are there any family members or administrators here to support Jeremy in this wonderful occasion? Please stand and be recognized.
I'd just like to say quickly that it is an honor and a privilege to serve in this capacity. And I'd like to thank all the members of the board and the superintendent for affording me this great opportunity. And I look forward to working with all of you as we strive to improve our school system and serve the citizens of the city of Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome again. Our alternate representative will be Xavier Williams, who was our student liaison this past academic year. That's just information. Moving on to the consent agenda, item 3. We have item 3.01, the Personnel Report, 3.02, minutes of the school board meeting of July 11, 2018. 3.03, certification of the closed session of July 2, 2018. And 3.04, certification of the closed session of July 11. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval as presented.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore, and I believe seconded by Dr. Woodhouse, that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion from members of the board? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to superintendent and staff reports. I will now turn the table over to Dr. Smith, our superintendent, so he can give us information that we are all probably yearning to hear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is an absolute pleasure to start the superintendent and staff reports. I know that you just approved in terms of personnel report, and I'd like to just be afforded the opportunity to recognize two individuals that I know who are present with us this evening. And we will recognize all of our new administrators later. But I would ask that Ms. Latonya Harris to please stand. I know she has members of her family present. Please stand so that you can be recognized. The new Assistant Principal at Basset Elementary, and also Ms. Heather Goode, the Assistant Principal at Armstrong and Tucker Cap. And they will join other administrators, new administrators, later in the school year, where we will have an opportunity to meet and introduce all of our new administrators. But I certainly wanted to highlight their presence this evening with family members. So thank you so very much, Madam Chair and members of the school board, for that opportunity. We'd like to move now into our transportation update. And we would ask that Mr. Wills to come forward, Mr. Darren Wills, who will share with us information regarding the Transportation Department and the great work occurring there. Indeed, they are the driving force for the great things that we're doing in terms of Hampton City Schools. And we greatly appreciate Mr. Darren Wills and members of his leadership team, as well as all of the members of our Transportation Department. We could not do the wonderful things that we're doing for young people without your support and without the support of your team. So we're delighted this evening, Madam Chair and members of the board, to ask Mr. Wills to provide us with the highlight in terms of some of the accomplishments and the work with the Transportation Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, members of the board. Dr. Smith, I certainly would like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing me to stand before you tonight to share some of the good things that we have implemented this past year and some things that I'm excited about we will be implementing for this upcoming school year. Certainly would like to welcome Dr. Mason to our HCS family. Looking forward to some great things from him as well. So again, good evening. I would like to start this presentation off by...
And we're going to assist Mr. Wills.
Getting some new batteries.
My apologies. Teamwork. I would like to start off by just giving you a brief overview of our transportation staff and also some statistics from the FY '18 school year. We currently have 147 full-time drivers. We have 10 part-time substitute drivers and 57 part-time bus attendants. Also, we, for the FY '18 statistics of total miles that was driven in the FY '18 school year was 2.6 million miles that we drove for the entire school year. We performed 1,079 field trips, and we also performed 1,006 athletic events. Students transported daily was 14,604 students on a daily basis. We also performed 996 routes per day. Please keep in mind, this does not include Saturday school. However, it does include what we ran on a daily basis for Hampton City Schools. I also find this very important. I know we've all heard of driver shortages worldwide, and we have been working hard as we continue to make sure that we get good individuals in Hampton City Schools to serve our families, our parents, our school officials, and certainly each other. So we have been ramping up and eagerly preparing to bring in our driver recruitment. And I'm happy to say that we've partnered with the School Parent Teacher Association. We've worked through them to get the word out that we need good, good drivers. The Virginia Employment Commission, Fort Eustis and Langley Air Force Base. The school marquees has always been a plus for us. As you know, people are busy passing our schools. So we certainly want to thank the administrators and the secretaries at the school for helping us to advertise on the school marquees. We certainly want to thank the post office, Hampton City Schools website, social media, Channel 47, and Hampton Library. We continue to work hard to make sure that we are ready and able to provide the necessary service to our families and our students. As we prepare and we're getting ready for the new school year, we're preparing for the back-to-school in-service meeting on August the 23rd, which will be held at Liberty Baptist Church Training Facility. During that time, that's when all of the drivers, the attendants, and everyone from Transportation come together to prepare for our back-to-school, to get prepared for back-to-school on September 4th. One thing that I challenge my drivers with all the time, what can we do? How can we help our kids even more? Not just transporting, but how can we provide some other tools for them to make sure that they're successful? So this year, we're doing our own back-to-school supply drive. So as our drivers come in, which I'm expecting about 200-plus people, when they come in, we've asked them to please stop by the store, pick up something that we can contribute to our kids in making sure that our kids are successful and they have the necessary materials on the first day of school. Our call center will be open on August the 23rd. That will start at 7:00 a.m. Then it will run into 6:00 p.m. And this is to assist the parents or any schools that may be calling in for bus stop information, how to access our web query and find out the exact bus stop location and the timeframe. So we want the parents to be able to have a voice versus a voicemail. Now, please understand, and though I know it is a high volume of calls, and we work from 6:00 a.m. or 5:30 a.m. to 8 o'clock at night, that entire two weeks of school opening. Because we want to make sure that we get back to our parents and get the necessary information that they need, excuse me, to them. Drivers and attendants will be completing dry runs, parent notifications from August 24th through August 31st, meaning they will have their route sheets then. They will be out on the road performing their dry runs to make sure they're comfortable come September 4th, and we know exactly where to pick our students up at. Also, parkouts will be held August 27th through August 31st. We find that a great opportunity to meet with our administrators and/or his or her designee for the school year to say, we're here. This is what your dismissal is going to look like. Because oftentimes, buses come in in the morning, they drop off, and then in the afternoon, buses may be in a certain order. So we find that to be very, very critical to make sure that our administrators feel comfortable with dismissal the first day of school until we get acclimated, as well as our students in knowing exactly where their buses are. So the parkouts are very important to me. That's time that the drivers, attendants, and administrators come together and set high expectations of a great and successful school year. Current and upcoming events. Last year, you all remember, we were in partnership with Mr. Mark Crum with the Stuff the Bus event at the Hampton Walmart. And I just wanted to inform you that we will be participating and in partnership with him this weekend at the Hampton Walmart. And that will be starting from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Hampton Walmart this year. Transportation highlights. This is a good part for me because I am very excited. I feel that our employees are valuable, and I want them to understand and know that we're not just a body on the bus, but we're the first person to greet our students in the morning and the last person, most of the time, to see our kids in the afternoon. So setting that positive example and a nurturing environment for our students is critical. And I am charging myself with making sure that I equip my staff to make sure we're prepared to do just that. So I am proud to let you know tonight that we, last year, had two certified defensive driving instructors. Two of our employees went through the National Safety Council and became certified. So we're going to be taking all of our drivers through the defensive driving for inclement weather, different road hazards, making sure that we're out there, we're performing, and we're being the professionals for Hampton City Schools and representing this division. Also, we are proud of the CPI training that we will be providing, the Crisis Prevention Institute. We have two individuals that were certified in that last year. So we will be implementing this training for all of our drivers and all of our attendants. We will start off with the special needs drivers first, but I find it to be critical that the regular ed drivers will participate out of this four-day training that first day. So therefore, I can bring my regular ed drivers and my spare drivers together on the first day to talk about de-escalating issues. How do we resolve the issues that we're having on our buses? And we want to make sure that we're able to help in dealing with preventing different types of emotions and stuff, and our people are prepared to do that, to assist our children in Hampton City Schools. Also, this year, the Virginia Association for Pupil Transportation, I am proud to announce that out of the 46 districts there, Hampton City Schools stood tall in representation. And this is individuals the entire state that the Virginia Association for Pupil Transportation Conference held this year. And I'm proud that one of my drivers, Mr. Jose Hernandez, went to Roanoke, Virginia with me and my staff, and he participated. We didn't place first, second, or third, but I thought that out of 46 states that participated, we stood out, and he was one of the best drivers that stood out in the state of Virginia. And he did well. So I'm very pleased about that for Mr. Hernandez. Also, I was elected to be on the Board of Directors for Region 2 to represent our district. And I'm very pleased and happy to participate with other regions within the state of Virginia to actually be able to have a voice in different policies and procedures. But not only that, but how can we get better collectively? It's not looking at what you do, what I do. It's collectively, we're doing the same thing. And that's providing a service for our students to get them to and from school in a safe and efficient manner. So I'm very pleased to be a part of that. Also, I am pleased, and I want to take this opportunity to thank our superintendent, Dr. Smith, and Ms. Reeves, Nancy Reeves, our school board attorney. Because we've been working hard to see how we can collaborate more with our special ed department. And that, I am pleased to say today, we are moving forward and making great progress. I am very excited about that. So with this Spec Ed 1-on-1 training, what we're going to do is, after our in-service on the 23rd, we will bring all of our drivers and attendants together that service, who service our special needs students. And we will have some special ed coordinators there that will help them better understand the different disabilities. Also, as a question, they can ask questions, get answers, to help them better resolve and service the students that we transport. I do want to thank Ms. Alexander, Ms. Lemon, and Nurse Gil because we're in the process now of providing our drivers information to better service the students that they transport. So we've developed a profile sheet that will be coming out this year through special ed, as well as through health services. So we can better identify the different triggers of new students that we're transporting that are special needs. New triggers, different strategies, different ways to better serve the needs of our students. So I'm very pleased about that. And Nurse Gil and her staff has been wonderful because, as you all know, we have regulated students who maybe, you know, have, be a diabetic, have asthma attacks, seizures. So now we will have profile sheets that my people are better equipped that they know to focus and better manage these particular students who have certain needs that we need to be meeting. So I'm very pleased and want to thank them for their hard efforts in making sure we have these profile sheets. Also, I'm pleased to announce, and I'll have a photo here shortly, we do have a new restroom facility at the Mary Peak Bus Lot. I know Ms. Henry was here and a couple of other individuals, and we were making sure that we stayed, put that in the forefront of making sure we provided a new facility for our drivers to use as they get off their buses during, after their particular runs. Also, I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you for the six new buses that we're getting. That is really going to help bring our fleet up. And we really appreciate Dr. Smith and the DLT, as well as all of our board members for supporting us with that. So thank you. This is a photo I would like to share with you of Mr. Hernandez and my staff that was there. This was at the award ceremony that he received his certificate. And he was just overjoyed and elated to be there and participate against the other drivers within the state of Virginia.
Just one concern, Mr. Wills, and that's the Redskins hat I think I saw in that photo there.
Dr. Smith, that has been put to rest.
I'm not sure how. I did not pay attention to that, but that detail.
Yes, sir. Also, I just wanted to show you this. In the beginning, this is what we went from, from our facilities that we had at the Mary Peak Bus Lot. And I would just like to thank many people who helped us make this project better for our employees, and they are overjoyed. We went from the regular porta potty to the trailer porta potty, as you can see there. And now I'm happy to say, this is the facility that our maintenance guys was able to build. And a special thanks to John Kobly, Todd Sealy, Jeff Winston, and Matthew Plank because they worked tirelessly out at the Mary Peak Lot to get these facilities up for our people to be able to use. So I certainly want to thank them for doing a phenomenal job and making sure our people had adequate facilities. The academies of Hampton, I am pleased to say that I have, I met with Ms. Heard last week. And we are very, very optimistic and know that we are going to have a good year with the new academies that's coming. We've been in contact, and I've also been in contact with Dr. Woods when she's had some concerns. So I want to thank you for your help, Dr. Woods. But we've been trying to devise that communication process. How are we going to communicate issues? How are we going to work through these issues? So we've developed a strategy of how are we going to do that in a shared Google Drive, and we can answer any questions back and forth towards each other. And that's been very successful thus far. We wanted to make sure that we identified specific locations for the shuttle and the hub area, meaning that when those drivers, kids come in in the morning and they get off their bus, we want to make sure that we have adequate signage to show those students that when they get off their bus and they're going to that shuttle bus to catch that particular bus to the various academy that they will be attending, that they know where they're going and they know exactly which bus to get on. So we will identify signage at the school as well as on our buses. Arrival times to the school has been modified for us to arrive five minutes earlier. And we are very happy about that because we feel we're going to need that timeframe for that transition that transition from the regular bus to the shuttle bus to get to their respective academy. And Ms. Heard has been working with the schools on that, so I am happy to know that we can modify that time slightly. And dismissal will promptly be at 2:30 in the afternoon for us to get those students back to their zone school so they can ride their buses home. We will be able to provide a student listing through our Transportation Edge Log System. They will go in and identify those students through the, through Power School, so then we will know exactly which students we need to create and generate a route sheet, so we'll know exactly who we're transporting on a daily basis with the shuttle run. And also, all procedures, we're working hard to make sure everything is finalized no later than August 23rd. I know we may have some changes here and there, but we will continue to work hard to make sure that we get our young people where they need to be on a daily basis. Any questions? But I just want to take the opportunity again to just thank you all for the support you've provided to this Transportation Department. I look at the entire DLT team and members of the board and our Superintendent and the services that has been provided, also Ms. Ruth, the services that have been provided for us to make this progress and for us to take our Transportation Department to another level. I just want to make sure that we have individuals who are here for the right reason, and I'm proud to say and know that we have some awesome drivers. We have some that have been here 40-plus years and still telling me they're not going anywhere. And those are the ones I want to keep, because they're here for the right reason, they're impacting lives, they're making a difference in our kids' lives, and they treat these kids as if they're their own. And I will not settle for anything else as Director of Transportation for Hampton City Schools. So again, I thank you for your support, and I'm certainly open for suggestions and any way we can improve to make things better as we serve our parents, our community, our school officials, and our children that we transport on a daily basis. So at this time, I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for that wonderful report, very fine report. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Henry?
First of all, just to comment that we just really appreciate the attitude and the enthusiasm and dedication of all of your department. It's top to bottom, the drivers and everybody concerned, mechanics, everybody wants to do the best they can for our students, and that's evident every time we visit with you. I think the park outs are a really good thing. One of the most confusing things as a parent, if you are dropping off or picking up for one occasion and you wonder what in the world, how am I going to get past all these buses? And I'm sure it's confusing for the teachers and the administrators when we have some changes to know exactly what they're dealing with. So I think that's a really good strategy, to have all the buses there, and you physically see how they line up and what they're up against, and that's it. The initiative with Health Services is wonderful and the special ed, and I'm excited about the new buses. I have a couple of questions. Are the new buses going to be involved with seat belts yet?
No, ma'am, but they will be seat belt ready as we purchase the new buses. They have to be. They pass that, so when that law comes.
I know we do many things for safety, including GPS and radio and things that help us know exactly where the buses are and what's going on with them, and that's important. With regard to the call center, those are lots of hours, and it is pretty easy even for somebody who's not real good with their computer searches to find your bus stop location if you put in your address, and it will tell you your school and your bus stop location. Are we going to make any effort to contact parents of kindergarten or younger children to explain about? There's something very reassuring about getting a personal call from your bus driver that says, "I'm Mr. Wilson, I'm going to be driving your child to kindergarten, I'll be picking them up, this is my number, you can call me if you have any concerns." We do that for the very youngest children, do we not, or just for special needs students?
Yes, ma'am. We do that for our pre-K, our kindergarten, IBESL students, and we do make sure that all of our special ed parents are contacted. And I too agree, that is very personable, and I know as a parent myself, I want to...
It makes the best impression. You're ready, you feel good, because Mr. Wilson has called me and told me he's picking up my child every day. It makes a big, a big difference. So thank you for doing that, and best of luck with everything. I know it's going to go well. The academy stuff is very exciting that you've worked so hard on, and I know there'll be some good notification system for that when you get it all ironed out.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you for saying that, because as we all start, anything new, you know, it's kind of rough at first, but I'm committed, along with my staff, to make sure we get that pavement.
Well, I knew, I know for many years you worked miracles to get people to the magnet programs at FIBUS, and that always worked out. It only took a day usually to solve any problem, so I know it's going to be fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions from board members? Yes, Ms. Mugler?
Just a couple of comments and maybe a question or two. Do want to congratulate you and thank you for serving on the Virginia Association for Pupil Transportation. That's great to know that you're there and that Hampton will have a voice in that organization. And so thank you for taking on that leadership. And I want to thank you also for the extra work that you've done in working to coordinate on the academy transportation piece. I know that was very complex, and I'm sure it continues to be. And so when I look through the information that you did provide us about the academy transportation, you're identifying specific hub areas at each high school? Is that how that's going to work?
Yes, ma'am, because what we want the kids to know is that when they get off that bus, we're going to have those two shuttle buses parked in the same area every day. So, you know, we may have 20 buses, up to 36, 37 buses like we have at Hampton High. So I think it's easy to identify a location that those buses will be every day. Those of you who have been out and you've seen how we dismiss at Hampton High, that's a seven-minute dismissal for 37 units, and those buses are in numerical order. So those students have learned exactly, if their bus is not there when we dismiss, they know to stand in that area, and as that bus pulls in, that particular driver know to pick those students up. So I feel that it's important for them to know that those buses will be in the same location, so as they transition off the regular air bus, that they can get right on their shuttle bus and be prepared to be shuttled to their academy.
So they'll be in the same spot every day?
Yes, ma'am. We're hoping, that's our goal. So we want, what we want to do is, we're going to go out and meet with the academy coaches, we're going to go out and meet with that, the administrators designate of Transportation, and try to devise a plan of how we can work that. We want to do it collectively, because we're going to need their help as well. We'll be out there the first two weeks of school, you know, moving kids to show them exactly where the buses are. We know it's going to take some time, but we're willing to do whatever we can to make sure that we can get those buses in the same location every day, so our kids will know exactly where to go. It's very frustrating if you go all the way up to the top and the bus may be in the back. I don't, I don't like operating that way. I want to be consistent, and I want to have these buses in place so these kids know exactly where to go.
So are those students that will be using the shuttles going to receive some sort of correspondence, telling them about this transportation piece, as if somebody else is doing that part?
Yes, ma'am.
We will have a trade letter to care about the transportation.
So they kind of have a heads up when they go, that they're going to be looking for this hub?
Yes. You don't have the bus pass, the bus badge.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great.
And just to add to that, Ms. Mugler, when we do summer bridge, we're going to go ahead and start the training process, so we're going to do the shuttling then. It'll help us, it'll help the kids get the concept of what's going to happen.
So they can see what it's going to look like.
Week of the 13th through the 16th, that's what we're preparing for.
Great.
So our kids can get acclimated to what we'll be doing.
So we have six new buses. What does that bring our fleet number to?
Right now, we're still at 213, because we still have replacement numbers that we need to fill in.
Did we retire some?
We did, yes, ma'am. We had to, yes, ma'am.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Samuels?
Just have a follow-up question to Ms. Mugler's question in regards to the number of buses. What is the average age for a bus?
The average age is 12 to 15 years. But I do know we have other districts who may keep those buses a little bit longer, pending on funding. And we have buses now that we've had for, you know, that timeframe and past the 15-year mark. But with these six coming, we're able to remove some of those, so we're doing fine with what we, where we need to be with that 12 to 15-year time span. Also, a lot of districts go by the mileage. If the mileage reaches 200,000, prior to that, life expectancy, they may deadline or get rid of that particular unit as well.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions, comments? Thanks again, Mr. Wilson, and please know that this board stands behind you and your staff as you continue to be the driving force behind Hampton City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Superintendent, before you move to the next report, if I could, I know that Kennedy told me she had some things planned for her Nana before it got dark. So if you all want to leave, we completely understand, okay? Thank you. Also, safe travels. I'd like to also acknowledge, I didn't see him in the back, one of our city councilmen, Mr. Steve Brown, is here. We'd like to welcome you, because we're always pleased to have city council people here, simply because this school board enjoys such a good and strong and positive relationship with the Hampton City Council, and we look forward to even having stronger relationships. So thank you tonight for your attendance.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. We will then move to our staffing update, and Ms. Ruth, our Executive Director for Human Resources, will provide the staffing update.
Good evening. It's August, and so that means it's time for a staffing update for the 18-19 school year. Right now, we have 48 vacancy, teaching vacancies. 16 of those are at the elementary level. We have just three special ed openings, which is exciting, and I'm particularly excited about this number. Earlier in, well, in the 17-18 school year, we did a presentation on recruiting, and one of the programs that we talked to you about was P-PET, which is the paraprofessional Preparation for Extraordinary Teaching Program out of ODU. And we shared that we were going to have some of our instructional assistants who already possess a bachelor's degree participating in the program. So far, we've hired 11 of them, so we're very excited about that. It's been a great recruiting tool for us. We also have, I think it's two teacher-librarian openings. This is one, normally I talk about being concerned with math. This year, I am concerned about those two elementary teacher-librarian positions. They are very hard to find. We have grown our own over the years, and we have hired all those. We don't have anybody in the pipeline right now, so if you know anybody, spread the word. At the secondary level, we have 26 openings. Six of those are language arts, six math, four science, three social science, and then a handful of other positions. So, but as always, it's our goal to be 100% staffed on the first day of school.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ruth. Are there any questions for Ms. Ruth? Yes, Dr. Woodhouse.
Dr. Ruth, thank you for the report. Isn't that a higher number than what we had last year this time, as far as openings are concerned?
This is not an unusual number for the first part of August. The elementary number is higher than normal, yes.
Okay. So what are some of the procedures we're using for the advertisement, other than just the usual?
Okay. One of the very exciting things that we have done, we have started using Facebook, and just yesterday, we pushed out a new ad through Facebook. We'll have to get you a link. Can you, can we?
Could you come to the mic, please? Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening. One of the pieces that we have tried in the last few weeks is basically pushing out marketing through social media ads, not just putting it on our social media feed. It is not free, but it is much cheaper than going other routes as far as trying to recruit. So we tried it at the beginning, and we put out a CFO advertisement where we can target the states, the age group, education, so forth. We did that on a Sunday morning, and by Sunday evening, we had eight applications. So I don't know quality applications or not of those eight, but we had eight, so we had a nice reach. Then we went ahead and we put, tried again, and did the videographer that we're trying to hire for PEG, and had quite a few applications from there. So we're trying to step it up a little bit, and we created a teacher recruitment video, and that went out yesterday, and it's had almost 8,000 views. So that's one of the new avenues we're trying.
And to speak to the quality, yes, we are getting quality applicants. In fact, a couple of the folks that you appointed today were a result of the Facebook ads. So yes, they are being effective. We are also reaching out to colleges and universities, speaking directly to either their department, their education departments, or specific content area departments. I know, talking to one of our recruiters this morning, this morning, she had sent out, I think it was 63 targeted emails, and there are 24 folks who are in the process of completing an application. So it's a lot of targeted recruitment. We did have a virtual job fair in mid-July, and there was some success there in terms of being able to hire some candidates. We look anywhere and everywhere for them.
Thank you. Is there a limit to, and I know we try to avoid it as much as possible, but is there a limit to how many provisional licenses, I mean, that we can give out as far as this school district is concerned?
No, sir.
Do we look forward to doing anything like that when you're recruiting probably young people that are just coming out of school with a degree in education?
Typically, students who go through a teacher preparation program do not need a provisional license. They will immediately be issued a collegiate professional, or if they finish a master's program, a postgraduate professional license. The folks who are in need of a provisional license are those who go through a content program. I go through, and I'm a history major, and I decide in the last semester of my senior year, you know, I really want to be a teacher. And so those are the kind of folks that are in need of the provisional license, and we work with, we work with them. We set up a plan for them. They've got three years to get their full license, and we work with them to ensure that they, they have work that they have to do on their end, but we work with them to try and ensure that they meet those requirements by the end of the three years.
Yes, Ms. Mugler?
Just a quick, can you, I'm sorry, you were talking really fast when you got to the secondary area. So we have six language arts openings?
Yes. And six math, four science, and three social science, or history, government.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions by board members? Okay, thank you, Ms. Ruth.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair and members of the board, we will have the final report under Superintendent and Staff Report. That would be our business operations and financial report, and Mrs. Visel Townsend will provide that report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Dr. Smith?
Good evening.
I'm here this evening to report the May 31st Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Incumprances. Our revenues and expenditures totaled $187,210,829 and $183,726,45 respectively. Our budget is based on an average daily membership of $19,0250. The spring student record collection was submitted March 31st with 19,013 students. This resulted in 237 fewer students than what we had budgeted for, and resulted in a revenue loss of 1.8 million. We also projected revenue loss in Medicaid, federal impact aid, and indirect costs for the year, and as of this point in time, those losses have been mitigated for the fiscal year. We've also reported categorical transfers to and from category nine for the month of May, and if you have any questions on what's been submitted to you, I will entertain them at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Townsend?
Regarding the budget update.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend, for your time.
Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes Superintendent and Staff Reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, for those reports. The next item of business is the hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communication or petition. Ms. Bowles, have we received any?
No, we haven't.
Thank you. Moving on to Item Six, Deliberation, where we have 6.01, Appointment of Courtney Ferris to the Special Education Advisory Committee, known as SEAC. Dr. Smith, I think you have some comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You should have, each member of the board should have a letter from the chairperson of the SEAC, the Special Education Advisory Committee, from Mrs. Bethia, really describing the resignation of the person, the teacher who served, Mrs. Sharon Scott, in that capacity, the process that they followed in terms of selecting another teacher representative, as well as the credentials. And so she has really provided the board with an excellent overview of the why and the recommendation, the process that they followed, and certainly the credentials. And so, Madam Chair and members of the board, I would be more than happy to answer any specific questions, and I know that Mrs. Bethia, who serves as the Chair of the Hampton Special Education Advisory Committee, is also present this evening as well. But I think that her communication speaks to the matter at hand.
Yes, it certainly does. And thank you for being here, Ms. Bethia. Did you want to move that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I would ask, unless board members have questions, I would make the request that you would move this to an action item, which would then allow members of the advisory committee to move forward and to have their initial meeting with the appropriate representation in terms of teacher representation on that particular committee, which is very important.
Madam Chairman, I move that we move Item 6.01 under deliberation to items for action as Item 7.08.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Henry and second by Mr. Kilgore, that we move Item 6.01, Appointment of Courtney Ferris to the Special Education Advisory Committee from deliberation to action as 7.08. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Mugler?
Madam Chair, I believe Ms. Ferris is present in the audience tonight. If she would like to stand and let us recognize her. She's been up on this stage a couple of times.
She has.
Well, hello, Ms. Ferris. Great. Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Is there any other discussion? Here in numbers, Bowles, please call for the vote.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. The ayes have it, the motion is carried, therefore, we will be moving 6.01, the Appointment of Courtney Ferris to the Special Education Advisory Committee, to action, Item 7.08. The next item for deliberation is 6.02, Amendments to Cell Tower Site Leases at Bethel High School and Hall Road. Ms. Reeves, do you have some comments there?
Yes, Madam Chair. These are two recommended 15-year extensions of current cell tower leases that will increase the monthly rent by $100 per month, and ultimately net the division $18,000 on each one of the leases, just for the extension alone. And in addition, the... And in addition, the cell tower company has agreed to start that $100 per month as soon as you all extend the lease. So for the time in the interim that the ongoing lease continues, in one case till 2026 and another case till 2030, you will be getting that additional revenue for that as well. So the income to the division is actually going up fairly exponentially. So the administration is asking that you not only approve it, but perhaps if you would consider it, move it to the action agenda as well.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we move Item 6.02, Amendments to Cell Tower Site Leases at Bethel High School and Hall Road, from the deliberation agenda to action items tonight. Any discussion?
Just to note that this becomes action item 7.09.
Yes, ma'am, duly noted. No discussion? Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Ayes have it. Motion is approved. Now moving to Items for Action. The first one is 7.01, Virginia Public School Authority Resolution. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve the motion to approve the Virginia Public School Authority Resolution. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Ayes have it. Motion is approved. The next items are 7.02, Revision of School Board Policy AA-School Division Legal Status, 7.03, Revision of School Board Policy CBD, Superintendent's Contract, Compensation and Benefits, 7.04, Revision of School Board Policy CBG, Evaluation of Superintendent, 7.05, Deletion of School Board Policy EI Insurance Management, 7.06, Revision of School Board Policy EIB, Liability Insurance to EI Insurance Management, 7.07, New School Board Policy BHE, School Board Member Liability Insurance, 7.08?
No, stop.
That's right. Yes.
Madam Chairman, I move that we consider those policy items that you just stated, 7.02 through 7.07, as a block there. All have been properly deliberated and involve minor corrections to existing policy.
Second. Is there a motion?
It has been properly moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we approve Items 7.02 through 7.07. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Ayes have it. The motion is approved. Now for Item 7.08, which is the Appointment of Courtney Ferris to the Special Education Advisory Committee, SEAC. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of action item 7.08.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we approve the Appointment of Courtney Ferris to the Special Education Advisory Committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion is approved. Congratulations. And the last one is 7.09, which is the Amendments to Sell Tower Site Leases at Bethel High School and Hall Road. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the amendments to sell tower site leases at Bethel High School and Hall Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been approved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve the amendments to sell tower site leases at Bethel High School and Hall Road. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Ayes have it. Motion is approved. Moving to Item 8, Deliberation First Read, 8.01 through 8.07. I see Dr. Cynthia Cooper will be explaining these to us. And Dr. Cooper, if you would take them individually so then we can see if any board members have any questions about each of them. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Good evening, Ms. Cherry. Mr. Kilgore, members of the board, glad to bring these to you tonight. Most of these that you're going to see are going to be the result of changes to the Virginia Code and then some suggested language changes from the Virginia School Boards Association. So we'll start with Policy JGE, the Student Long-Term Suspension and Expulsion. There are pages, changes on Page 1 and Page 5. Page 1 is based on the statutory changes and it limits the number of days that a child can be long-term suspended from school to 45 days. So a long-term suspension is maxed at 45 days. There are four exceptions to the rule that are explained here as well. Two are defined in code. They involve drug offenses or weapon offenses. Serious bodily injury is the third exception and aggravating circumstances as defined by the Virginia Department of Education is the fourth exception. So those are all the changes. They are based on code. The next thing that you'll see is on Page 5, and this is just an added recommendation from the Virginia School Boards Association to talk about the sorts of considerations that would go into any recommendation for expulsion. It's just information added. All right.
Are there any questions for board members for Policy JGE?
I think we'll want to discuss it when we deliberate further next time because it seemed, as I read this, that there's a little variation between what it says and what the recommendations were from the presentation we heard in Richmond from the attorney at our conference. So it's just kind of complicated and we'll want to deliberate, but we understand the intent and the reason for doing it.
All right, thank you. Shall I move forward?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Policy JGD is similarly based on code change. This is student short-term suspension and it limits the out-of-school suspension days that are allowed for elementary children, particularly those pre-kindergarten students through grade three. Students in these grade levels are, have a maximum out-of-school suspension of three days. Again, unless there are those same exceptions that we saw in the long-term suspension policy previous. All right, moving forward then to Policy JC, the School Attendance Zones. What I'd like to ask the board members to do with this is, it needs additional language. We would like you to table this for tonight and we will add the language and bring it back for first read at our work session later this month. It just needs an additional sentence or two.
This is Item 8.03.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
With your permission, I'll move forward to JED, the Attendance Policy. These changes begin on Page 4 and continue through the remainder of the policy. They are also based on changes to the code about truancy, specifically the days at which school officials must take particular actions and then which school officials should take particular actions. The major gist of it is five days is, that hasn't changed. At five days of unexcused absence, we still take action with a corrective action plan at our schools. It is our practice to reach out to parents by phone and to try to contact them, do everything we can to clear up the unexcused absences before we take that step. But now it is recommended language from the VSBA that we have added. On the sixth absence, we will continue to have our school officials make a recommendation, a referral to our attendance officer, which is our truancy response team. This is the inter-agency team that really works with families to try to figure out what the barriers to attendance are and to solve those problems with families. We'll continue to do that, but the code does allow us to wait up until the 10th unexcused absence to do that. Because we need children in school to learn, we will continue to make the referral at the sixth and continue to have a TRT meeting at the sixth, but the code does give us a little wiggle room to wait until the 10th absence if necessary. Also, after that 10th absence, typically before the code change, after another unexcused absence, which became the seventh one, we were forced to make a court referral, even if we had put something in place and it hadn't had time to work yet. So the legislature has recognized that school divisions and families and TRT teams need more time to work with each other and solve problems before we take legal action. And so we still have the opportunity to move forward with legal action if we have noncompliance on the part of the family or if we believe that that's in the best interest of the child, but we do not have to take that action. Then you'll see, we have a chart that lays all of this out on Pages 5, 6, and 7, and those changes are just reflected in the chart. Okay. Next, we moved over into the area of wellness. There has been a change in the code with respect to required moments of activity, time that young people should be involved in physical activity, and it's now reflected in our policy that we, physical fitness is not just available, but it's required for all students in grades K through 5, 20 minutes of physical activity per day or an average of 100 per week. And then for our 6th through 12th graders, we've set a goal of 150 minutes. It's not required by statute, but that is, according to the American Heart Association, what we should all be doing. So we have set that goal and then listed the ways in which that could be satisfied. Admission of homeless children, Policy JECAA. There is a relatively small change to the language on Page 5, and that is because the code, the language in the code which defines what constitutes homelessness has been changed. And so our policy has been changed to reflect that, also adding to the definition of unaccompanied youth there at the bottom of the page. And then finally, we have a new policy based on a new code. It's Policy JCC, the Admission of Military Children. And based on this new code section, it honors the service of our military forces by protecting them from having to pay tuition charges and allowing their children to stay in school even though they may have to transition. So this spells out the kind of things that we like to do for our military families. Now it's in code and now it's in policy. And so if a child is attending our school and they move, they're given orders to move to a different military housing situation that's outside of our jurisdiction, they can stay in our school system. If they receive orders for a new area and the child wants to stay in school and they have care provisions here, it says they can stay in school. And then if a family gets orders that they're going to come to the Hampton area, be stationed at Langley, they're not going to be here until December, but they can make arrangements for the child to go ahead and start school because they think that's in the best interest of the child. It does allow families to go ahead and produce those orders about when they'll be coming and we can go ahead and enroll students and we will be awarded average daily membership funding for them through the state. So that one, to me, is a very joyful policy that the legislature moved forward on that. And that is all I have for you tonight, Madam Chair.
Well, you know, the JCC Admission of Military Children, Dr. Smith and I were just saying, that's the one that we're very happy that Senator Mamie Locke worked very hard on making sure that came to fruition. Are there any questions, comments by board members as we move forward? Thank you, Dr. Cooper.
You're welcome, Madam Chair.
Appreciate it. Our next item of business is information. The next meeting of the Hampton School Board will be held 6:30 PM Wednesday, August 15, 2018, at the Rupert Sargent Building at 1 Franklin Street. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any items of information you'd like to share with the board?
Madam Chair, no further business from the superintendent. Thank you.
Are there any informational items from board members? Ms. Henry?
Well, I've had a lovely week. I began on Monday with Ms. Cherry going to Bethel High School where we heard presentations from students regarding their summer enrichment program, which gave them opportunities to learn about science concepts and produce independent and very creative videos that would explain the common misapprehensions in those science concepts to elementary and middle school students. They were, the videos were in themselves very creative and wonderful, but the presentation presence of the young people and their discussions about their teamwork and their process, it was just a wonderful example of process, project-based learning at its best. All of those young freshmen came in and shook our hands and gave the kind of presentation and answered questions as you would expect college students to do or someone you were interested in employing. They were, they were right on point. It was a wonderful experience. And this morning, I got to attend Barron Elementary School to see one of our summer enrichment programs there and students, some of the students when I got there were taking their post-test assessments to prove that they had gotten through what they needed to, but they did it with a lot of fun. The whole school was decorated for beach and surfing and the pre-K students came in costume and they sang their good morning songs and their, recited their letters and the sounds they make and were just happy to be in school and be prepared for kindergarten. So wonderful initiative that Dr. Smith started two years ago to try and give an opportunity to those kindergarten, students entering kindergarten who haven't had the experience of a pre-K classwork and they weren't in our four-year program and perhaps not in nursery school, and now they're confidently ready for kindergarten because they can recognize their name and they know their letters and they know how to get off the bus and they know what they're doing and they're looking forward to, to school. As, as one of the administrators said to me, you can't always teach a child to read in four weeks, but you can teach them to have a really good attitude about learning to read in four weeks. So it was, it was, it was a lovely morning for me and I'm, I'm constantly amazed at all the wonderful, those were just two examples, but the wonderful summer enrichment programs that are available for our students and their, their joyful acceptance of those programs.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. That was a wonderful time, especially at Bethel High School. Any other information? Yes, Dr. Mason?
Yes, Mr. Will's already mentioned it earlier, but I definitely want to highlight the Stuff the Bus event again this weekend that's going on with Mr. Mark Crump with State Farm that's going to be held on Saturday from 11 to 3 at Walmart. So I want everybody to come out and participate and do some great things for some of our students at Hampton City Schools.
Yeah, that is an exciting event. And when you go in and you buy things and you give them to them for our students, they give you free hot dogs.
Yes.
And tell you that Walmart provides that. Probably the last, any other information items?
Yes.
Mr. Samuels?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have one information item that I would like to share, that Healthy Families Incorporated will have their pre-K graduation on next Thursday, August 9. And it will be held at North Hampton Community Center and it will start promptly at 11:00. So I would like to invite the board, and as you know, Ms. Henry serve- to come out and see our young people graduate and hopefully off to kindergarten.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. That's always an exciting time. Ms. Mugler? Okay. I've got one list here I need to read in terms of information. Each year, the chairman has the responsibility of selecting different board members to serve on various committees throughout the city. Some are regional and some are state, and some even have national tentacles. And I just want to announce that those appointments have been made, and I would like to share them in the interest of being transparent. The Career and Technical Education Committee, that committee assists in planning, implementing, and assessing career and technical educational programs. The representative for the board for that committee will be Ms. Phyllis Henry. For the Town and Gown Committee, which works to facilitate, facilitate communications and relationships between the City of Hampton, Hampton University, Thomas Nelson Community College, Hampton City Schools, and Hampton Businesses, that representative will be Dr. Richard Mason. For our New Horizons Board of Trustees, the representative from the board will be Dr. Reginald Woodhouse. New Horizons is owned and operated by the Six Peninsula School Divisions, which include Gloucester, Hampton, Newport News, Pecoson, Williamsburg, James City County, and York. The New Horizons Board helps steer the organization towards a sustainable future. The WHRO Hampton Roads Education Telecommunications Association, Incorporated, Education Advisory Committee, known as HRET-A, includes 19 school divisions throughout the Hampton Roads area who all work together to own and operate WHRO. Their leadership and guidance continues to keep WHRO on the forefront of education. The board representative will be Ms. Martha Mugler. The alternate will be Ms. Phyllis Henry. The Virginia School Boards Association, VSBA voting delegate. Local school boards are involved in every step of VSBA's legislative efforts. Once the legislative committee has identified policies and positions to recommend to the VSBA Board of Directors, they are voted on by the Delegate Assembly, the voting delegates, at the annual convention. The board representative for that will be Mr. Joe Kilgore. The alternate will be Dr. Reginald Woodhouse. And then there is the Advocacy Institute for the Federal Relations Network. The Federal Relations Network is the National School Board Association's core grassroots network. It provides an opportunity for local school board members to be engaged with their members of Congress as they advocate for public education. In addition, members receive vital information throughout the year concerning federal legislation and action, as well as share calls to action with fellow school board members, and that board member representative will be Ms. Martha Mugler. It's important to point out that these people were selected because we wanted to make sure we could match up the skills and the skill sets with the workings of whatever the committee represented. Also, we wanted to make sure that we had active participation and that these people would facilitate dialogue that is consistent with the values, goals, and missions of the Hampton School Division. Any questions? I would like to point out that Ms. Mugler has passed me a note that I did want to be mindful to let you all know that the school board will be holding a retreat on August 29th. More information will be forthcoming, but we're looking forward to that as we get ready for this wonderful, wonderful upcoming school year. With there being no other business, be honest adjourned.